To us in that regard, we have building officials that are aging out and retiring. And we're not replacing them at the same rate at which we are losing them. And so we are, you know, we're very pleased to see some of the things in this legislation. That would, you know, help create opportunity to solve this problem. But the one thing, the, the couple of things that the building officials association are not in favor of. Yeah, that are included in this bill are the language about removing the four year appointment. And the due process for the, you know, discipline and dismissal of, of building officials. Those things have been in legislation and in the building code for a very long time. We believe those are important things. They're certainly important issues to the building official community. And we look forward to continuing to engage in solutions to this problem. You know, I think the greatest thing that we can do as professionals is to do what we can in order to replace ourselves when, you know, our, our time comes to retire and move on. And that concludes my testimony. I'd be happy to engage and answer any questions.
Mr. Rupert, I just want to applaud you tremendously for sitting through conversations about an item that you are not here to testify on and for your persistence. It is absolutely admirable. And just want to be sure that I am hearing. Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, I think one of our attendees who already testified may be still in the room. And forgive me, Mr. Rupert. So back to what you said earlier, which was the four year appointment and the due process. Those are the two, two main pieces of feedback that you'd like to see. And certainly I will just add, this is, this is why we have the public hearing process and then planning and development. We have the bills be fully drafted prior to hearing and sometimes in the, um, in the process, we really learn from this. Well, always we really learn. So thank you for that. But did I, did I get those two things right?
So we were not in favor of those two items. The, the rest of the bill, you know, we think moves the needle in the right direction. And, and you know, we've been, we've been happy as an association. And I myself have had ongoing conversations about this topic for a number of years. And, and you know, many of you here tonight know me at least somewhat. And you know, many of you know that, you know, I've, I've been operating there a regional building department that encompasses four towns for a number of years at this point. Uh, you know, so I think, you know, in that respect, aside from representing the building officials of the state. You know, that gives me a unique perspective on this issue. You know, especially, you know, I, I live and work in Eastern Connecticut. I live in the quiet corner. And, and, and it is the quiet corner, you know, that has this issue, I think. Uh, not, not necessarily worse than other places, but, but it's different because we don't have the volume of building permits that, you know, other places do with, you know, more robust con- construction going on. Um, and so I think that exacerbates the issue here in the, in the quiet corner. And, you know, because we're only looking for part-time building official coverage in most of our municipalities.
Thank you very much. And I will turn it over to Rep. Kupiel, who has really put, highlighted the issue. And I will look forward to her conversation and thank her for her advocacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'd like to thank Mr. Rupert for your um, help in navigating the bill and support with your membership and communicating the aspects of it. Um, just in terms of the other portions of the bill, I want to just make sure that we're, um, we're good with specifically the, um, the process for scanning, et cetera. And that, that concept moving forward that definitely benefits your organization. And if you have any concerns or thoughts regarding that, um, we did have a conversation with the state library. Um, and we're going to continue that conversation, making sure that it is a process that works well for both municipalities and state.
So I, I think that certainly, you know, is very helpful. And it certainly takes some pressure off of the department when those records are publicly available without, you know, necessarily somebody having to call. Somebody going into a paper file and pulling those and scanning them and emailing them, you know, that, that certainly is a help. But I think, you know, transparency is one of those things that we all strive for every day in whatever part of government that, that we're engaged in. And this is certainly just one other part. So I, I did hear that. I don't see that as an issue. And I could, you know, one of the things that you and I have talked about with, you know, uh, you know, offline, not in this forum is, you know, um, online permitting and things that, you know, those are things that make processes in building departments streamlined. You know, we would not be able to undertake the, the four town uh, regional department that we do with the level of customer service that we like to provide without using online resources. And so I think, you know, that's an important part. And I, and I think, you know, the one thing that we would love to have some more work on, you know, down the road i- is really to find a way to get, um, I think where this, where this bill falls short is we don't have a process in this bill or in, you know, legislature anywhere where we've got a line from technical schools and technical colleges to get people right into this profession. Or our current regulations require, you know, that somebody have a couple of years experience before they can, you know, get inroads into this profession. The issue with that is that, you know, by the time they come out of trade school, they've been working in the trades for two or three years. They don't want a job in code enforcement because it just doesn't pay enough. And so, you know, what's happening is, you know, gentlemen of my era, you know, we get to the point where we've been in construction for a number of years. Our knees are wearing out. Our hips are wearing out, our shoulders are wearing out, but we want to remain engaged in the industry we love. And so we're starting a second career as code enforcement officers in our forties and fifties. And I think, you know, that's unfortunately what we're getting. And really, if we, if we want to, to be able to do this and do it well, you know, we need to find that route, I think, that gets young men and young women, you know, directly from the trade schools and the, you know, the, the community and technical colleges right into a, a, you know, a career in code enforcement. And, you know, I've had conversations with Todd Birch of Connecticut Department of Labor. They, they would be very interested in trying to create some sort of an apprenticeship program. And I think these are all things that are, that are certainly, you know, should be on the table, if not now, but certainly in the future.
Yeah, and we, we've had quite a few discussions on that. Um, I, I don't expect the, creating the pipeline within the structure of, um, resource for building officials, but it also, it will fill some of that void. And that we will be able to have junior building officials and people moving up the pipeline and having the support of more senior building officials to help them build confidence in their role. Um, and also the specificity of electrical versus, um, the different areas that you could really focus in on. Um, and then also the legal component of it, which is really necessary, especially for when the municipalities are having some of these larger, more challenging projects or along the shoreline with, um, with a FEMA compliance as well.
Absolutely.
Well, I thank you. I thank you, Madam Chair. Station, Representative Winkler.
If I missed it, I apologize. You mentioned four towns. I think I know about Bolton and Wellington. What are the other two?
Ashford and Andover.
Thank you. And were we in a meeting in Vernon Town Hall many moons ago? Um, with, I guess it was three building inspectors ago for Vernon, but, uh,
We were, you know, Vernon is one of those towns, unfortunately, that's had a revolving door. And, you know, when, when I've been in va- available, uh, the town of Vernon, Vernon has engaged me to assist them in their search process. And I've even filled in for a time as your building official when you were without a leader there.
Yes, you were presented to me back then as the best of the best. So I'm glad to see that you're still around.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any levels tonight, Mr. Rupert. Thank you. Enjoy the rest of your evening and thanks for taking the time to be here with us. It's very appreciated.
You're very welcome.
Next on our list, we have number 125, Jane Sprung, to be followed by 126, Sam Gold. And Rep. Winkler, was your hand raised from before? Okay, just making sure. Okay, Ms. Sprung, welcome and please go to the.
Thank you. Thank you, dear, uh, thank you, Representative McCarthy, Vehi, Senator Juan, Representative Zulo, all the members of Planning and Development for this marathon of, of testimonies. Uh, my name is Jane Sprung and I'm speaking, I'm, I'm a member of the RTM. I'm a member of the Roundtail Association, which holds a lot of forums on, um, affordable housing, but I'm speaking on my own behalf. I'm here to strongly oppose HB 524, 5429, an act concerning transit oriented development. Hartford's one size fit all, fits all approach to local communities is self-defeating. And that it will ultimately devalue homes, destroy struggling small businesses such as local gems like Diane's Books and our local dry cleaners, which are located around, around the train stations. The act will likely decrease revenue to towns and ultimately the state because of destroying businesses. Post-pandemic, more and more people are also working from home, including my husband, my children and many colleagues. So the need to create extra housing around the train station for pe- people commuting to New York City, I believe needs to be further studied. HB 5429, in addition to tearing down historic buildings and small businesses a half a mile from train stations, does not address issues of affordability as it lowers the affordable percentage developers need to set aside with only 10% of the dwelling units. Representative Bronum estimate, Bronan estimates at least eighteen, 1,875 units will need to be built around train stations if only 25% of Greenwich's 500 acres can be developed. We've already heard a few hours earlier in the evening from Gail McNair from New Haven, who was, who has told us firsthand that developers have torn down a lot of the affordable small homes to build large luxury homes. And she and many of her, of her friends cannot afford to live there. We've also seen some of this in Greenwich. In addition, it will make 830G mathematically impossible to reach for Greenwich. Because if you increase the denominator of the stock faster than the numerator of affordable housing, I don't know how we're going to reach that goal. Thus, TOD has very little to do with increasing affordable housing, but it is a gift to developers to ignore local voices. If those who speak loudly on the subject of diversity are true to their words, why are they supporting proposals that diminish the diversity of towns, regions and sections of town that are diverse and what local residents support? Small businesses and offices have clustered around our train stations. This bill pushing for high density housing will push up the price of already expensive real estates around our train and high-end apartments, making it harder for small businesses and local people to afford the rent. I am proud of our town's longstanding efforts to provide affordable housing. I was just on an RTM call where we approved a SOMAR uh, to encourage more affordable housing in Greenwich as well as to, um, help reform 830G. We have an affordable housing ADU in our home and I support Greenwich delegation, Greenwich communities and our local hor- housing authority, the RTM and other advocates who continue to strive for inclusivity, inclusivity and opportunity as well as local autonomy in Greenwich. I have heard comments about the young people leaving town and needing more affordable housing. I would argue more young adults and others would stop fleeing Ca- Connecticut if Hartford concentrated more on pro-growth, lower tax and pro-business policies that our state is in dire need of. Thank you for your time tonight. Oh, I can't hear you.
Ms., Ms. Sprung?
Yeah, sorry. I didn't hear what you said.
Yes, I said Representative Fiorello.
Oh, th- thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Jane, thanks so much for, uh, giving us breaking news uh, to the legislators who are hanging on to this call that, uh, we had this sense of the meaning resolution pass in Greenwich. And I just wondered if you could tell us more about, um, uh, what this really represents uh, in, in a me- a message to legislators, um,
Well, it's, it was a sense of the meaning resolution. It was signed, uh, the petition was signed by 150 uh, residents of Greenwich. And it's basically, you know, making a statement. It's, it's a non-binding resolution, but it's making a statement and it was approved by the majority of a 231 RTM body. Um, and the statement is that, you know, we are, Greenwich is working hard and we will continue to work harder on affordable housing, but, um, there are some major flaws with 830G that we, that we would like to have revised so that we can continue to work towards meeting our affordable housing goals. So it was a, it was a two-pronged bill um, with the main, you know, objective of saying, look, there's a lot of issues with eight, Greenwich is working hard and there's a lot of issues with 830G. And if you were able to include some more of our housing stock and, you know, sort of relook at the way we're doing things, um, you know, we think we can get there, but we, but 830G is just not working for us.
Thank you. And I, I really feel that, you know, all of these residents staying on till 11:30 on a call um, and the town passing the SOMAR, it's, it's just such an incredible affirmation that our citizens in Connecticut are informed, um, they're engaged and they're asserting their will so that their government understands the will of the people. And I, um, I appreciate all of your efforts, Jane, because you represent just the whole movement that is happening in Greenwich and across Fairfield County. So thank you so much.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for everybody for your time.
Us in terms of being able to hear me, can you hear me at this point? Yes, I'm obviously having some internet issues here at my house tonight. Ms. Sprung, thank you very much for being here with us this evening. And, um, I hope you have a wonderful rest of your night. Next, we have number 126, Sam Gold, to be followed by 129, Stephen Alveney.
Uh, good, uh, good evening. Good evening, uh, um, um, Madam Chair and, uh, honorable members of the committee. Um, I am here before you, having waited thirteen and a half hours to speak on House Bill 5428. But after waiting for so long and hearing all the testimony on 5429, I have a few comments on that bill as well. Um, first, um, uh, HB 5428, an act, oh, first let me choose myself. I'm Sam Gold. I'm the executive director of RiverCog. Um, also sir, uh, I'm also a certified planner, a member of the Connecticut chapter of the American Planning Association. I'm here to strongly support an act concerning building officials, res- resources relating to the administration, state building code, and the promotion of careers in related fields. Um, during my time at RiverCog, uh, uh, the, at least a half dozen times a year, I have CEOs coming, uh, coming to me and telling me, do you know a good building official? Do you know a good CEO? Do you know good a fire marshal, uh, wetlands agent? And, uh, in our small towns, we have a perennial problem of a lack of qualified candidates to do these jobs. And the, and one of the main reasons for that is there are part-time, um, positions which generally are going to people towards the end of their careers. So when we do find a qualified person who is willing to take a part-time job, they don't hang around for that long. And then we're in this situation again in a few more years. Um, I worked with Representative Kupiel when she was first selectwoman of Clinton, uh, and worked with a number of my other CEOs on this issue. And, um, uh, we came up with this idea of a shared team approach that could be facilitated by the cog. Um, currently municipalities can share a single building official, but what we envision is something a little bit, a little bit bigger. If, if you're sharing a building official, maybe two, three towns can share a person. What we, what we envision is a team approach where you could have three individuals appointed as a building official. And that team could serve interchangeably in a number of towns. Um, that way the towns could share the cost of full-time employment for those, for those, uh, three individuals. The towns would get, um, a coverage, uh, five days a week. Um, and, uh, this, this, this team approach could be hosted by the cog or facilitated by the cog and would be driven by digital records and also digital processes. Uh, you'll see in the bill, uh, we, 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 we have, um, a discussion about, um, a digital process and workflows with DAS. Uh, we have a statewide building code. Uh, we believe that there should be some minimum standards as, as all of our, our cities and towns go digital, that we're all going in the same direction. Um, can we have common forms? Can we have common minimum standards? Um, and if we are going to have those, so we can have those towns working together, it really should be the state who is providing leadership and vision to making sure the towns are all going in the right direction. Um, I think this is also very important in regard to cybersecurity and making sure that digital records and processes are, are kept protected. Uh, furthermore, um, this, uh, this bill, um, we, we have been in discussions with DAS. We are aware that some of the elements might be, uh, possible under existing statute.
Excuse me, Gold, you have 10 seconds remaining.
Okay, uh, very quickly on, uh, HB 4, uh, 5429, I'd like to say that I have a different approach for this. It seems very cynical to take, uh, the power away from commissioners when instead the commission, uh, uh, could, or the committee could instead direct municipalities to create transit-oriented development, uh, zones around transit stations with minimum performance standards. Um, there's no definition of what transit-oriented development is in this bill. Uh, and I, I think that is key to making sure it's not transit approximate development, but transit oriented and actually useful. Um, and the.
Thank you, Mr. Gold. I, I know you, you may have more. You may get some questions on that.
Okay.
But I, I so appreciate you staying here with us today. And also, um, for you and Rep. Kupiel and, and Mr. Rupert and others who have really continued these very important conversations related to 5428 and our building officials and how we administer uh, that work in our state. And we'll, we'll, I'll come back to you again on 5429, but for now I'm going to go to Rep. Kupiel. Thank you very much, Mr. Gold. Um, I just want to give you one more moment if you would just clarify, um, regarding what is currently in statute um, and allowed for the sharing and why the expansion of what the proposal would allow for as well.
So currently in statute, um, a municipality has to appoint a, a single individual, or at least it's a single, uh, uh, building official is a singular, uh, word. Um, and although there, there might be some debate whether or not a municipality can appoint multiple people, it's not clear in the statute. So at the very minimum, what we're asking here is to allow for municipality to, to identify multiple individuals to serve as a building official. Uh, this, uh, this clears up, uh, a very troubling issue for a lot of our, our, our CEOs. Is that when a, a building official goes on vacation or is, or is out due to an illness, um, usually a building official from another town fills in for that person. Um, if they, if it's just for, uh, a, a short time, they may not have gone through the official appointment process where you actually replace them officially. Um, that, that, that legal issue is, I, I don't think has caused any problems for our CEOs in our region, but is of a legal concern. Uh, by, by being allowed to identify multiple people to serve in a team, not only do you create that redundancy for, for vacations or illness, but also that, that continuity in regard of, uh, when, when people retire. And it allows for apprentices, uh, apprenticeships and junior staff to be able to move up. Uh, currently, um, a single town that can only offer 15 hours of employment does not have the wherewithal to train, uh, junior staff.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gold and Madam Chair. Mr. Gold?
Yeah.
Mr. Gold, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I, are we still having a lag with my audio?
Yes, you stay muted for, like, for about 15 seconds before you get unmuted.
Interesting. Okay. Is that happening for everyone who's on the Zoom or just some people? I saw, if you don't mind me pausing for just a second, Mr. Gold. Senator Lopes, I saw you nod your head. Can, are you having that too? Do you mind unmuting for a second?
I hear you fine, no lag.
Okay, all right. Who knows how to explain all this? But, Mr. Gold, um, just to give you a very brief, if you don't mind, opportunity to say another, just a few more sentences about, uh, your thoughts about 5429. I would appreciate that.
So, um, 5429, one of the big issues is that, uh, my staff and I looked at, looked at it today. And, uh, it does not impact our shoreline east stations because, uh, because the exemption for uh, stations that are not served by sewer, none of, none of the shoreline towns in my region have, have sewer. But we were trying to understand what it actually meant. And that was a real, that was great difficulty. We have an AICP planner. We have a, we have a lawyer who has experience in land use, uh, on my staff. Um, but, uh, but I think my point was, is that the goal of having transit-oriented development and transit-oriented development districts around our transit stations is a very good one and supported by a recently adopted, uh, regional plan of conservation development. The problem here is that the statute, at least how we read it, would take the power away from the town to actually do the planning work that the plan, that planning and zoning commissioners were, were elected to do. And, 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 and there's no performance standards actually defining what, what are we trying to accomplish here? What I, what I would, uh, what, what I would like to see, uh, would be some, something like, um, the general assembly directing, um, planning and zoning commissions to create TOD zones and to implement them with, with performance standards of what we mean by this. Um, and furthermore, um, I have had a long, uh, long history of working with state agencies, DOT, DCD, DEEP. And they don't understand what transit-oriented development is. I've had an undersecretary of, um, of, actually assistant commissioner of DCD come to me asking for maps of parcels that could be TOD around our, our train stations because they didn't have GIS resources. We have a DOT who's built a train station and a new train station in Clinton that's not, that's not, doesn't interconnect with our local bus system. Uh, well, it has a bus stop, but the bus can't actually access it. Uh, we have, um, we have DEEP who has, uh, who has, uh, authority over, uh, over, or over SEPTIC, and that's very important in our region. Um, some, there's some issues there as well. Um, I, I think to just, to, to, to just focus in on the, the planning and zoning commissions and the municipal zoning powers without actually looking at the state government as a whole and directing how those agencies could work better together and with municipalities to actually facilitate um, transit-oriented development, I think would be a better and more, uh, comprehensive approach.
Thank you, Mr. Gold. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Um, and I, you're underscoring, uh, an issue that many of you know has been of great importance to me, which is our GIS capabilities. And we did pass a bill last year and hope to see our state both with GIS as well as planning, support and resources provide that kind of, um, coordination, information and support. Rep. Fiorello.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, thank you so much, Mr. Gold. Um, I just, I wanted to, you said something that piqued my interest. Um, we haven't had anyone, uh, really give suggestions on what the legislature could do to direct TOD if, if that's the right way to go. And, um, I, I wanted you to kind of expand on like, what would be a better bill from Planning and Development Committee of the Legislature to help guide, uh, you know, proper affordable housing as opposed to what we keep seeing is, um, something that is incredibly aggravating to, uh, citizens of all of our, you know, so many of our towns.
So, um, so transit-oriented development is not new. It's, it's actually most of our, the centers of our towns where, uh, where we have our, 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 let's say the New Haven line, uh, train stations. Those are transit-oriented developments that, uh, that, that were built in the 19th century. It's a mix, a mix of uses of housing and, uh, and businesses. So, uh, and, and we, in more modern times, so we have had new transit-oriented developments built across the country and, and even in Connecticut. Uh, I, I think we just need to be clear as to what we're trying to accomplish here and, and actually define it. Um, what is in the bill is, is, is transit approximate, uh, development. It, uh, you have to be within a half mile of a transit station. Doesn't actually require that you would be able to walk to the transit station. You could be on the wrong side of the, of the, of the train tracks. Um, I, I al- I also, I also think that, like, if, if the goal is to build more housing um, near train stations, that, that could work in many places. Uh, but why, why do we have to cynically withdraw that power from the, from the planning and zoning commissioners and from the towns to be able to meet something which the general assembly may, may ask them to do? Uh, uh, and, and because what, what, I think what, in, at the end of the day, what this bill does is it's a, is a zoning map change and zoning amendment, uh, text amendment that's going to be, that's been opposed around transit stations and meet, that meet the, the criteria of this bill, which is most of our major mass transit stations. Um, um, the, the commissions would have to rewrite the regulations to comply with this. But if they don't, but if they don't, um, the existing regulations can't be enforced. So, um, there, there's, there, there hasn't been a GIS analysis of this bill. So it um, there there's, there there hasn't been a GIS analysis of this bill. There's been no maps, and if you were a commissioner, you would, you would have maps, you would be able to assess what what the what the potential uh zoning change could bring. Um, with that all said, um, we could do so much better with TOD. And and I think starting with uh what a clear policy of what we're trying to do, uh incorporating um a a good amount of affordable housing in these developments, I think is important. Um, and 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 I think also making sure that they work as as communities and neighborhoods where people can live their lives and and accomplish um the daily tasks uh in in a way where they don't have to use a private vehicle, a single occupant occupancy vehicle like like unfortunately, many people in suburbs have to do today.
Uh, okay. Um, thank you for that. I was gonna say, why is it unfortunate? I have a kid about to get in a car, he's turning sixteen, and it's just the happiest thing that ever happened to him, but um.
Maybe not for you.
But I I think you also point to a a good thing, which is what is the point? What are we trying to accomplish? And I think that's where there's some disconnect with residents of Connecticut and the proponents of this bill, which is residents are all in to say, let's have a diverse group of housing and we're cool to pursue policies that uh that encourage this diversity. Including affordable as defined by the government, deed restricted and for that segment of SMI and AMI. But what we're seeing in this bill is, you know, there's a disconnect. This is not that. This this, as we read it and as experts like yourself and others have attested, is really very um heavy handed and it's quite an advantage for developers to build luxury housing in some of our most expensive areas, which will only drive prices higher. So I think um, I think what, I think it is great for all of us and any residents left listening is we want legislation to be clear on what the purpose is, what the goal is, and then does the language of the bill drive us to the goal that we've set? And I feel like oftentimes we say we want affordable housing, but this bill is not taking us that way. And that's where people are like, what's going on and what is this about? And it really creates a real distrust uh among our citizens. And I don't know if you wanna comment on that, but thank you, Mr. Gold.
Um, I I I think the important thing is a syncing with, syncing up with the policies we already have on the books. We have a complete streets policy in Connecticut. And complete streets is about accommodating all modes of transportation, whether it be pedestrians, cyclist transit in in where people have actual transportation choice. Are are the areas around transit uh stations should be um uh the pinnacle of of a complete street. Uh, yet uh yet this what's being proposed here wouldn't uh wouldn't uh uh allow a municipality to say, oh, there's a bus uh at, because there's no site plan approval process, you couldn't uh, a municipality couldn't say, oh, there's a transit stop here, you know, uh and and maybe you should put in a bus shelter as part of your development. Like that isn't, that that's, there's no opportunity for the municipality to do that in in this uh in this proposed bill. Uh, now, these should be the most walkable, transit friendly, bicycle friendly areas of our state because we're spending so much money on our transit service. Uh, I, you know, we wanna make this work, we want, want to be successful. And uh, it's, I I I was, we were very confused this morning. We trying to understand this, how how this actually was linked to transit oriented development unless you had a really good developer, and there are good developers there who wanna do the right thing, who understand these principles. But um, I I think I think a different approach would be for there to be direction and realization across state agencies, but also across the state that we need to use the investment in transit better at these stations. And we come up with actual performance standards of what we wanna see there. Uh, and and maybe we, maybe we we do initially leave it for the commissions to figure out how to get it done. And then if they can't get it done, then maybe go go this option, but but uh, you know, i- i- you could have like in New Haven, for example, you could have a development on the south side of the railroad tracks that's inaccessible to Union Station. Um, but it would be considered a transit oriented development. Um, the only way that there'd be transit oriented would be if there was some sort of pedestrian connection over under those tracks. But because it's less than a half a mile, it would be considered transit oriented. You know, so so let's, let's be clear and honest about what we actually want to get accomplish, and let's accomplish it. I think we can do it.
Thank you, Mr. Gold. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Rep. Fiorello. Mr. Gold, thank you very much for being here with us, for sticking with us and for your work at the COGS and look forward to seeing you again soon.
Right.
Next, next on our list, we have number one twenty nine, Mr. Stephen Alvani, to be followed by number one thirty one, Ms. Kim Healy. Mr. Alvani, welcome and please proceed. Oh, Mr. Alvani, you need to unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. Thank you very much. Um, good to have you. My notes start with saying good morning, but it's not good morning. Over a little while, maybe it will be. Um, good morning, ladies and gentlemen, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the committee. Thanks, Zell, committee. Thank you for taking the time to allow me to speak um on behalf of HB fifty four twenty nine and Act uh for TOD. Uh, my name is Stephen Alvani. I am a certified um commercial appraiser in the state of Connecticut, a certified commercial appraiser in the state of New York, and associate broker in the state of Connecticut, and associate broker in the real estate broker in the state of New York. And I'm also, I've been in the commercial real estate profession for over thirty five years. I would not say I'm a politician, but I am the chairman of the Darien Planning and Zoning Commission. I am opposed to the 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 losing of local control for on my town and other towns in the state of Connecticut and the one size fits all zone for all zoning issues um across the state of Connecticut. As a lot of you representatives and senators and witnesses have heard tonight, the diversity of across the state of Connecticut is wide. A lot of people, some people need orientation of new zoning in their town, other towns do not. It sounds like certain people wrote this bill that are not on your committee, which I was very surprised to hear. Um, when I, when I first got updated on this, on this um bill, the first thing I did is I wanted to figure out how many acres were in um or how many acres of land were in a one mile radius. So I asked my son, who is a sophomore at Darien High School, to figure it out for me. I know I came up with a bunch of other witnesses today. It is actually, um, he did the math. It's pi R squared times point five, and it's five hundred and two point six five acres. Um, and I do know that other people rounded that up to five hundred. What this bill is talking about is doing a density of fifteen dwelling units per acre that equals to um seventy five, seventy seven thousand five hundred thirty nine point five um units in an acre of land um or in a one mile radius or half mile radius from a train station. Um, it does sound like some of the the bill in information is confusing. I did hear Mrs. Brunner earlier say that wetlands areas um were not included on developable areas, but the density is. What that means is the FAR for the wetlands and the part that is not buildable is um is transferred to the other piece that is buildable. So for an example, if you could build sixteen, if you could build fifteen units on one acre and half of the acre is not usable, you can build sixteen, you can build sixteen units on a half an acre, and it's gonna be a taller building. It's what lands it really happening. The next question is, I was asked, um, a lot of people wanna know what a dwelling unit is. In my business, I get this question all the time. A dwelling unit is actually either an apartment, a condominium, or a multifamily unit is how it's called in the current world. Um, it's effectively called a household. That's what a household is in in the demographic world. So what I did is I pulled the demographics at my office for the Darien and Nuroton Heights train station, centering on the corner of Edgerton Road and Heights Road in the middle of town. Currently today, we have nine hundred and thirty households within a half mile of the Nuroton Heights train station. If this legislation went through as drafted, that would be a an eightfold increase to the seven thousand five hundred thirty nine units per um in that area.
Mr. Alvani, you have ten seconds remaining. If you could summarize your testimony.
Well, that's, uh, I lost that one. Sorry about that. Um, we did a study pre-pandemic in February twenty twenty in the town of Darien. In the long term plan, um, we've built eight hundred and sixty, we have built or improved eight hundred and sixty six houses in our town over the past twenty years. Thirty one point four six of those are affordable. This plan would would reduce that from what we have done so far. And the bill would get down to ten percent affordable. We're very proud of the thousands we built and diversity in our town that we.
Mr. Alvani, just a heads up.
Thank you, Mr. Alvani. Oh, God, and Mr. Clark, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your testimony today. Um, and I appreciate you spending the time here with us to share your experience, especially given your uh background. Representative Fiorello.
We've heard from so many different towns. I think you're the first speaker um with your expertise from Darien um beyond uh residents in your town. And uh, you were just about to talk about uh the accomplishments of Darien, but I'm really interested in your understanding of what this kind of high density means. And thank you very much for clarifying what that gross meant because it does mean that, you know, if you can't get it all in that acre because portion of it doesn't work, then you can go that way. And uh, that way is uh really scary for a lot of us in our towns because we live in towns that are kind of human sized, and uh nobody wants to go to these supersized places. Otherwise, we'd all be living in Manhattan. That's where most of us came from. But um, I, could you expand more on um really what is the reality of what this bill is saying for a town like yours? Is it possible to do, or is it like a a feeding frenzy for developers?
What's gonna land up happening is is my my past, I can give you a little bit, in terms of project over my career, I've worked on the Harbor Point project here in in Stanford with BLT. I've worked on the spin, the um Steel Point project in Bridgeport, which is a fifty acre project. I've worked with with Spinnaker Properties in Norwalk, South Norwalk, East Norwalk, at the American Seven train station. It transforms all those towns, and it does a lot for some of those towns. The one thing that I think is is not true in any of those things, there is no such thing as a single, as a multifamily transit oriented development. You heard other speakers tonight talk about transit oriented development. They all have to have either a retail component, an office component, professional component, entertainer component. They create ecosystems that to feed off of each other. In our town of Darien, we've created that at the Nuroton Heights train station. We're also creating it downtown in the Corbin district, which is in the center of town. Those projects, the ones I spoke of earlier, the BLT project here in Stanford started in two thousand and two. The Bridgeport, the Steel Point project was sold in two thousand and fifteen. It's seven years ago. These projects take a very long time to develop and get vetted very fully by all the municipalities. In our town, we're creating these districts, um, and we've created new housing. There's a hundred and twenty two units that are gonna come online in in October of this year, actually September of this year, and the leasing office opens fourteen days from now on April first. They're gonna transform the town if it's, if it's not vetted and and looked at by the local people and by the Planning and Zoning Commission and and put through the process that we have in place in our town. We don't know what it's gonna come, we we don't know what it would turn out like. Um, it's, it's something that you're letting a horse out of the barn, and you don't know where the horse is gonna go. The other projects that we, you know, that I've worked on is the Fairfield Metro project in Fairfield. I think Ms. uh Ms. McCarthy-Vakey knows that one very well. The first one, the first thing that came out, started was two thousand and two. It's now two thousand and twenty two, and they built one or two apartment buildings there. Those things take a long time. There's a lot of voting that goes on. Other projects at train stations I've looked at are, I worked on a project in the Harrison train station, the Westchester County, the Tarrytown trees train station, Western County, the Sleepy Hollow trains in Sleepy Hollow, and also the Scarsale train shed. All those things do change the town, but they're all vetted by local people. We need to keep that in place in our towns.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Rep. Fiorello. And Mr. Alvani, just to address something you said earlier, in terms of proposals come before this committee from a lot of different sources, legislators and advocates and uh the executive branch agencies, and uh, that's just, just something to share with you uh about the process. So I appreciate very much your opportunity, you're taking the opportunity to share your experience with us and most of all, your persistence in staying with us through the course of such a long day and night. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for the time.
Next on our list is number one hundred thirty one, Kim Healy, to be followed by number one hundred thirty three, Sam Romeo. Ms. Healy, welcome and please proceed.
Hello, everybody. Good evening, esteemed chairs and members of the Planning and Development Committee. I must warn you, my internet shuts off at midnight on the dot, so if I get cut off, hopefully I'll be gone by then, but uh if it, if I do get cut off, I apologize. Um, I have submitted my testimony earlier in the day. I wasn't sure if I was gonna be able to be on here now uh in opposition of the HB five two uh five four two nine, but I just wanted to come in person if I could to acknowledge your commitment, obviously, to patiently listening to everyone's testimony and for asking important questions that that, you know, even though you know the hearing will run even longer into the evening. Um, so being so late in the hearing process, I'm not sure that I can add much more substance uh that you haven't already heard, but I did just wanna say a few things to um add to my testimony that I said. Um, I do need to say that I am an elected member of the Town of Wilton Board of Selectmen. Um, I am here representing myself on the personal uh um in a personal capacity. I'm a twenty eight year resident of Connecticut. As uh as well, I should say that we have not discussed the bill at any of our uh Board of Selectmen meetings. So when I was running for Board of Selectmen last year, obviously, I spent a lot of time going door to door, meeting so many um people in my town. And, you know, they were all different. We all live in different types of housing, and we all have really significant different economic um situations. And as I was listening to others testify today, one might think that a town like Wilton is a one size fits all town, full of large, single family homes on large lots where all of us look alike and have the same financial means. Um, I can tell you with all certainty that that is not the case at all. And if you look at the numbers, we actually have diversity in our residents and in our housing. Uh, my email testimony will tell you what we are doing as a town to make it even better here on the housing front. Um, Wilton has affordable housing. We actually have some that was recently built right near one of our two train stations. We have rental apartments, townhouses, condos, senior housing. We have some eight thirty G. Um, and we have some high density, single family developments as well and really small lots. We still actually even have some really small homes that are, would be even considered affordable, even uh in Fairfield, Fairfield County standards. That actually some of the advocate groups pushing for this bill would have you believe don't even exist anymore in the suburbs. Um, many of our residents of Wilton have um lived here for generations. I would like to uh respectfully ask that you guys look into the development that's just being completed right over the Wilton border in Norwalk. Um, there are many new residential.
You have ten seconds remaining.
Really? Holy cow. All right. Well, I was gonna ask you to guys to look at the development at the end of the Super Seven. It's a huge TOD, and um I think it would look like that in other towns if if this bill passes. Um, you know, the the only thing I would add to all this is my fire, my father is a retired New York City cop, and he came to visit me a few years ago. And we went to a local grocery store, and he actually made me take him to Norwalk to a store because he found a small suburban town to be unaffordable for food even. So, you know, we really do need to think of everything when we think about affordability and not just housing. So thank you so much for listening. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Healy, and and it looks like perfect timing in terms of. Very well done. Impressive. I appreciate you sticking with us uh during the day and and your patience and persistence.
Thank you.
I hope you have a well. Morning. Next, we have Sam Romeo, number one thirty three, followed by Christina Volkwin. I, and forgive me, I may be mispronouncing, uh, who is one thirty four. Mr. Romeo, welcome. Please proceed. And yep, just take a moment to unmute yourself. If she can. Let's see if we can um offer to help with that. Hang on. Did that help? There we go. We can hear you.
You can hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Great. Uh, thank you, and not quite good morning, but I've been here since. Great. Thank you. And not quite good morning, but I've been here since 10 o'clock this morning. And I'm glad I got the opportunity to address the committee. My name's Sam Romeo. I'm chairman of the Greenwich Communities with the formerly Greenwich Housing Authority. I've lived in the town of Greenwich for over three quarters of a century. And have been very active in the community in the state of Connecticut. Travel estate a lot and been an advocate of housing and a lot of other issues that affect the state of Connecticut. Before I get into my comments, I just want to, there's been a lot said this evening about climate change. I just want to throw something out there and I don't want to answer now, but if somebody can answer it later on, the and the discussion is, I like to know where all the ice went during the Ice Age. There was no humans around and all of a sudden the ice disappeared and I can't figure out what happened to the climate that made all that ice go away. Wasn't human activity. But anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there. The, I I've heard a lot and I learned a lot this evening about this bill and and where it came from and how it evolved. And I made some notes and I have a lot of them, but probably won't get to all of them, but the, first of all, let me say I'm against the the transit bill of train station 5429. I don't think it helps affordable housing. I I think it's a detriment detriment to the community. I heard Sarah Roland earlier say that, well, we have four train stations in Greenwich. We could pick and choose which one we want to use and if they all didn't fit there, we can spread it out between all four. And I and I know where all four of the train stations are and I for life me can't envision development in in any one of those train stations. But I haven't had tear down a lot of stuff to create this transit district. And a lot of these, the 10% that this transit district would allow, really doesn't help affordable housing and probably there'll be one bedroom units. And here in Greenwich and Greenwich communities, I'm I'm more in charge and have to create family units, family housing. One bedroom units don't help a lot of the working families.
Mr. Romeo, you have 10 seconds remaining. If you could summarize.
Well, I won't be able to summarize everything, but I'll open up the questions and I'd be glad to answer a lot of questions because there's so much that I can offer some suggestions on how the state can participate to help affordable housing rather than outside the using developers that are in it for the profit. Our units are 100% affordable that we build and they stay affordable in perpetuity, unlike the 40 year deed restriction that developers have and then they go back to market rate and we're back to where we started 40 years later. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions and I have a lot of, I have a couple of suggestions how it's taking out.
Thank you, Mr. Romeo. I see Representative Fiorello has her hand. Representative Fiorello.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I will, you lobbed it up, so I will take the bait. What are your suggestions, Sam? Great to see you.
Well, great. First of all, the state can help by doing some bonding and giving out loyal interest loans to the to the housing authorities. And that is not as a gift, but as a payback during the development. We could pay back the state, the loan. You know, 1% interest or whatever it is that they can get good bonding on and give out more Section 8 vouchers to the communities where we could provide these vouchers to help working families. And that would subsidize their their rents. And also, I have to say, every unit that we build and create under the, in the housing authority, 100% takes advantage of that apple for that 10% rule. As it stands right now, the the 10% will probably never be able to be met by any town that doesn't meet that requirement is an exemption now because the number keeps changes. Every time we add new units, the the goalpost gets moved. So we're we're never going to be able to attain it. It's a, it's like a dog chasing his tail. That's not going to happen. But I think when when organizations such as myself or or housing authorities build these units, 100% of every unit we build or renovate under the statue, we spend more than 25,000, counts 100% towards that 10% rule. Now, a lot of people may not know that in housing authority right now here in Greenwich, we we have probably 1,275 units of affordable housing in the quote Gold Coast here in Greenwich. And I think we have total somewhere around 1,380, some odd units of affordable housing. And I I think we're a very well diverse community. And we we have right now plans on the table to build another 300 units within the next three to five years, right here in Greenwich. We have the land. I have the MIs on the properties. So it's it's not pie in the sky and we're doing some creative financing to make this happen. And we'll get it done. But if the state wants to help in helping us along with creating more housing, bingo, come up with some more Section 8 vouchers, come up with some state bonding with low interest loans and and we can get the job done. Again, like I say, our units that we build will stay in perpetuity forever. There's no deed restriction needed because they're always going to be affordable. But under the developers, they'll they'll wait it out the 40 years. And after that time is up, those units become market rate. So what have we accomplished? They're in it for the long haul. They look for investments and they'll sell it off to hedge funds and put that in their portfolio. So I I I look at that with a dolphin eye. But I I think that what we need to do is to help the working class people, the working poor. Right now, they're under tremendous stress with the 7.9% inflation rate. The gas prices are up close to $5 a gallon. It's taking food off their table. And and the food cost, everything is going up because of the transportation cost. So we we need to help them. They're already in place. And let's face it. Americas, Americans have a love affair with their cars. They're never going to get rid of their cars. And electric cars are maybe, you know, 10, 20 years from now, or will be a good big part of our our society. But right now, it's not working because the infrastructure is not there to really support the electric cars. Speaking of infrastructure, that's another thing. Our infrastructure is 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 getting up there. I I know like about 35 years ago, we invested $50 million in our sewer plant for an upgrade. And, you know, we've got to think of what's sustainable for each and every community, not just down at Greenwich. But each community has a limit, what they can sustain on its current infrastructure. And I've heard a lot about it this evening from other people who have spoke before me about flooding and pervious services and what we can sustain. The, when you build a school, and obviously, if we get all those people coming in, you'll need more for schools. But they look at the cores, the core amenities that within the school system. How much for recreation playgrounds, how much for the cafeterias for the children and all that? We have to think the same way when we build more housing. Our infrastructure, the core part of our town, what can we really sustain? So infrastructure is key. We're doing a lot of new building here in town. Right now, I have a major project going on in our Armstrong Court facility. When it's completed, be 144 totally renovated units, which will be able to be counted in that newer, that number that we're looking for because we're investing more than $25,000 per unit. So that'll be added to our housing stock as a counted number. But I I think that we're doing a great job here, here in Greenwich. And as has been stated earlier, even Governor Lamont, when he was down here, commended us for doing a great job in it. Greenwich is a leader in that community. I I think we should put housing, a construction of housing in the hands of people who have walked the walk and know how to do it. Housing authorities aren't in the business of having to make a profit at it. And if the the state gets behind us, or even if there's a new committee created by the U legislators, where you put together housing authorities and they can get together and say, okay, let's work as a group. Let's see what you're doing in your town that's working and what we can do in our town that's working. And maybe we can put all our heads together and create more affordable housing in a more efficient way. And I and I think that
I'm just going to ask you to summarize your answer, if you would.
Well, I I can leave it at that.
Okay, well, thank, thank you so much, Sam. And I just want to clarify. So are you saying that housing authority leaders don't talk to one another and strategize right now?
No, we don't. I I've attended a lot of the state meetings and I I sit there in the audience with my executive director and I'm listening to what other housing authorities are are doing and how they go through and screen their applicants for for public housing. And I asked him to get involved because there's a lot of things that we do here in Greenwich that I think have innovated and we can help them. And so he's gotten involved. Now he's he's the executive vice chairman of Narrow. And we meet on a regular basis and they bring new ideas to the table. We do a lot of creative financing here in Greenwich. We have properties that we own outside of the housing authority in a private portfolio that generates income that we borrow against and create, take that money and build and put it into the public sector to build more housing. So we we can help and give ideas to other housing authorities.
Just two quick, one, two quick follow ups is you you asked for more bonding to support housing authorities and and more Section 8 vouchers. Do you have a sense for what amount you would find helpful to Greenwich? I just want to extrapolate that to potential cost of the state.
Before you answer, Mr. Romeo, thank you, Representative Fiorello. And if you could just very answer very briefly and and summarize so that we can move forward, please.
Well, right now I have two projects on the table of which I, I'm short full of $6 million each. I have $20 million ready to go on one of the projects. But I'm short about 6 million. So if I could get 12 million in bonding, I can do 104 units within the next year and a half.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work and for staying with us through the course of the conversation.
It was, it was informative for me too. So I want to thank you and I want to thank all the people who participated because I learned a lot this evening. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Christina Volkwine, to be followed by Alexis Harrison. Welcome, Ms. Volkwine. And forgive me if I'm mispronouncing your name. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and good evening to all on the call. My name is Christina Volkwine. I have lived in Greenwich for almost 30 years. And I am newly a District 2 member of the Greenwich RTM, but I'm speaking tonight simply as a citizen who is strongly opposed to HB 5429. In Greenwich, we already have intolerable pressure on our downtown area. For decades, we have not had enough parking in our downtown district to serve our citizens and the employees of the commercial and retail businesses they visit. During COVID, when restaurants were allowed to build out outdoor dining into the streets and parking spots, the congestion that already existed worsened. Our train station is slated for a renovation that has not yet even begun. I think that was announced before COVID hit two years ago. How can we accommodate more housing of any kind with this unmet development need to critical infrastructure already extent in our town? And I categorically reject that housing development without the expectation that residents will keep and use cars is a reckless fantasy. It is almost always a given that anyone choosing to move to the suburbs will need a car because not every amenity is a walkable distance from the train line and not every amenity is on the train line that people will need. So in the spirit of what a couple of prior speakers and Representative Fiorello have mentioned that incentives are more effective than mandates, I wanted to offer some suggestions that would be an alternative to this bill. Number one, given the abundant vacant commercial real estate we currently have that is the lasting result of work from home COVID practices, why not incentivize developers first to convert vacant commercial buildings already near train stations into residential buildings? With the advent of remote working, these buildings conceivably will never return to full commercial use. Number two, we have abundant low income housing in Greenwich that needs renovation desperately and could possibly be redeveloped and enlarged for joint low income and affordable housing on existing sites. Number three, we need real transportation solutions for people who do not have cars, perhaps such as a fleet of small vans on an Uber type system rather than empty large buses currently running along only a few routes. In summary, central planning from the state that will arbitrarily force new additional multifamily construction does not at all understand or take into account local conditions. In Greenwich, lack of parking, road congestion, beach access issues, decaying housing and vacant commercial real estate, poor condition of our schools and other problems we already have would be exacerbated. Greenwich is a town in which people choose to live who do not want to live in a city. Please vote against HB 5429 and do not force the town of Greenwich and other Connecticut towns to become cities against their will and the wills of their citizens. Thank you very much. Volkwine.
Thank you. See, I did get it wrong the first time. Fiorello.
I just, I have to thank my constituents that show up. So thank you so much, Tina, for coming. I really appreciate it. I won't take any of your time with a question, but your remarks were very thoughtful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here with us. I will, I will note that though it is difficult to not have a vehicle, I think New Haven, if Rep. Lamar or Mr. Houseon were here, would would tout the fact that there's a significant percentage of New Haven residents who do not have vehicles. But point well taken in that it's can be much more difficult in other places. So we have hopefully some e-bike options. That was from another hearing, another day. But with that, we wishing you a good morning, actually. And thank you so much for staying with us throughout this conversation and for your patience and persistence. Next, we have Alexis Harrison, followed by Susan Halpern. And then our final speaker of the night will be Nicholas Abbott. Ms. Harrison, if you can give me a moment to find you on the screen?
Sure.
Okay, I hear you. And are you able to turn on your video?
I can do video. I look a lot different than I did at 10 o'clock this morning.
Oh, we all do.
But wonderful to see you, Representative McCarthy Veyhe and and the esteemed committee here. I actually missed my spot earlier tonight because I was with my Town Plan and Zoning Commission with our Affordable Housing Committee, talking about our affordable housing plan that we're submitting in June. As mentioned, I'm a member of the Fairfield Town Town Plan and Zoning Commission, a very proud member. Um, as mentioned, I'm a member of the Fairfield Town, um, Town Plan and Zoning Commission, a very proud member. Um, and I'm here to object to HB five, four, two, nine. As a member of the TPC, we make decisions based on our knowledge of our community, the infrastructure, historical preservation, traffic and more. And I believe this bill downgrades a commission's role in planning and zoning. In Fairfield, we have three train stations, one in our downtown district, one in the more commercial area of town and a smaller one in Southport, which is in a very historical area. In Fairfield, TOD development has long been underway and it remains a critical point in our planning. We don't need an owner's mandate from Hartford to encourage this type of dense housing. In recent years, the town has approved four TOD projects, um, near our metro station. Three of these projects have been built and occupied comprising of a total of three hundred and fifty-one units. A fourth approved project is near construction, um, composing of another three hundred and fifty-seven additional units. We are doing the work under the purview of our commission and which is commensurate with our infrastructure. Just, I want to just note some flaws, um, that are in the bill, um, HB five, four, two, nine. Again, it waters down the roles of the local planning and zoning commissions. Language like as of right means that the, our zoning bodies will be diluted and the elected and appointed public officials and with knowledge of our towns will be muted. Um, again, this creates density, not affordable housing. Um, it doesn't require any affordable housing on projects under six units. So you may expect existing affordable middle house to be replaced with luxury townhouses. I don't think we want that. And I really think this is going to be squeezing out, um, a lot of, a lot of people who, who couldn't normally afford Fairfield. Uh, I just also think the bill admits other specifics. Um, it, it doesn't offer the people of Connecticut, you know, many details. And I don't like that. I don't think you should be voting on anything that's vague. I think that's really an affront to, to people who elected you, who you represent. Um, I just also want to know the TOD bill would compete with the existing, um, eight thirty G bill, or excuse me, law and make the already virtually impossible ten percent ratio even more impossible. I was with my planning director tonight and he told us in a very candid fashion, we will never make ten percent in Fairfield. It is a very impossible, um, uh, number to ever reach. I, oh, um, this TOD bill would also siphon away, um, affordable housing, reduce existing middle housing and cause luxury ha- housing to replace duplexes in the downtown areas. Further consequences include more, more litigation and parroted the vague definitions in the proposed bill regarding exempt lands and the calculation. But also do you have ten seconds remaining, if you could summarize? Fair, I just want to say to this committee, Fairfield continues to be committed to creating diverse housing stock. We're very proud of the work that we've been doing and we are ready, um, to do the work that lies ahead. You know, at the end of the day, no one knows the needs and uniqueness of a community and those who live, work and volunteer here. Thank you for your work and your service to our, to our state.
Harrison, for being here this evening. Ms. Representative Fiorello.
Thank you so much, Alexis. And I just wanted to also, um, give you a chance to recognize you for the work you're doing at a grassroots level, truly grassroots with not one dollar that's given to you, uh, with CT one, six, nine. And, uh, you've been working on that since last year's, uh, zoning bills. And if you could just, uh, remark, uh, for the legislators, like how informed citizens are becoming on all of these rather esoteric zoning topics, but people are paying attention.
Okay, this time I think it's not me. Last time it was me, uh, Ms. Harrison.
I was just answering, um, Representative Fiorello's question.
No, no, but you froze is what.
Oh, sorry.
That's last time I froze, that's.
No, sorry.
You want to try, you want to try?
I would just say, yeah, I mean, I just, I, I thank you for the question. I know it's late. I would just say, I just think land is the most finite of resources, which is why I got involved many years ago before, before these bills really started to chip away at our local control. And, um, the people need to understand what is going on in Hartford. I think we don't want bad legislation. We want good legislation where all the stakeholders are brought to the table. It can't just be lobbyists and, and housing developers. It has to be everybody, environmentalists, preservationists. We have one, one earth here. And I really wish, um, this bill, but well, I wish this bill wasn't in existence. I just wish we, we could do a better job here. I think you should put this on hold this year and, um, let's, we have a lot of other things to focus on right now.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative Fiorello. Wishing you a wonderful morning, Ms. Harrison.
You as well. Thank you, everybody. Bye-bye.
Next on our list, we have Susan Halpern, to be followed by our final speaker of the evening, Nicholas Abbott. Ms. Halpern, if you give me just a moment to find you on the screen, there you are. Please proceed.
Thank you to the esteemed chairs, vice chairs, ranking members and members of the committee for enabling this public process and spending the whole day and night with us. I am the chairman or chairperson of the South End Historic District Study Committee. I'm also the vice president of the South End Neighborhood Association. Now, the South End of Stanford, well, I'm here to oppose the bill five, four, two, nine. The South End of Stanford near the train station has been zoned as a transit-oriented district for years. The South End is on the National Register of Historic Places that at one time, when first designated in nineteen eighty-six, included four hundred and forty-nine structures dating from the eighteen seventies to the nineteen thirties. Less than half of these properties exist today. Many homes were lost by eminent domain for street widening and bike lanes. Most of this original properties provided naturally occurring affordable housing as two or three family homes. We are currently working on creating a local historic district to save what's left of homes and small businesses in our neighborhood. By support, by supporting ownership of these homes, we can ensure permanent affordability for low and moderate income households who call the South End home. Across from the train station is one of our most historic buildings in the South End, the Blickensterfer Typewriter Factory, built in eighteen ninety-six. The Blickensterfer is currently under threat of complete destruction. Zoning has been approved to allow a twenty-story high-rise at this site. On this small peninsula in the South End, over ten high-rises have been built, adding fifteen to twenty thousand new residents, some who look at a cement wall or soaring glass towers. There is little open space and minimum setbacks. Hundreds more apartment units are planned, even though the site is unpleasant across from a sewage treatment plant and a junkyard, but close to the train station. Approving this bill gives developers the incentive to build higher and more dense buildings near train stations. Transit-oriented development could work if done in neighborhood character, size, density and architectural style. Buildings should have proper setbacks and open spaces, well-designed and planned.
Ten seconds remaining, if you could summarize your testimony?
Okay, I'm almost done. Well-designed and planned with enough parking and roads for daily uses and commuters. There needs to be thoughtful, balanced development that takes consideration of existing neighborhoods. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you for being here with us and for your persistence. I see Rep. Michelle has his hand, Representative.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, good morning, Sue.
Good morning.
I think that's a first. We're on the same public hearing, but in the morning. Um, thank you for hanging in there, uh, all day long and, uh, uh, for being a, a very dedicated voice for the community in the South End in Stamford, uh, and all your amazing work, uh, all those years.
Thank you.
Um, I think you, you, you touched on a, a good point on historical preservation, the impact of DOT and historical preservation. I remember a conversation about affordable, affordable apartments in uh, the Blickensterfer, that would have been amazing. Uh, but instead we're gonna, you know, uh, the same developer that's developed polystyrene buildings or Eiffel's buildings, uh, is gonna build more, uh, rentals that are gonna be very expensive uh, with cheap materials. So it was glad to hear that you meant that you approached that angle and also I think there's been a lot of, it depends of, of course, on the development and on the enforcement. Fortunately, we see that it's difficult for deep to enforce with limited staff, limited resources and, uh, and, um, and that there are impacts on the environment if you end up with a developer that cuts corners, right? You want to, you want to kind of share a little bit more on, on this, this side of the South End?
Well, sure. Well, when development originally started, you know, they call the Harbor Point Section there. It was, it, they were developing an industrial area, um, that was contaminated with coal tar and, you know, byproducts from, um, manufacturing, uh, you know, it was um, that, uh, Northeast Utilities was there. So they were stockpiling the contaminated soil right in our neighborhood, you know, in our backyards. You know, for months, you know, we, and we had to finally call Deepin, um, to help us, you know, have them remove the soil and they were transporting this, uh, soil around the neighborhood and just not very friendly to people that, you know, this is a working-class neighborhood. So, um, we felt that, you know, we weren't being treated properly.
Right. And Sue, do you have an idea of how affordable those apartments are in Harbor Point?
Oh, wow. Well, the studios, believe, I believe, start at twenty-two hundred. And the most expensive is thirty thousand dollars a month in, in the top penthouse apartments. There, so even the BMR units are not that affordable. Let's put it that way.
Right. We know, we know all too well about a broken system on BMR. I mean, we don't really protect the most vulnerable already at this point. Uh, but thank you, Sue. Uh, thank you so much for holding so long and, uh, uh, thank you for, again, all the work you're doing in the South End.
Well, thank you all for listening to us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Michelle. And thank you, Susan, for staying with us, for your persistence. Uh, it's much appreciated. Wishing you a good morning.
Thank you.
Um, I, before we go to Nicholas Abbott, who is one forty, we have one thirty-nine, Ramya Hopley. Welcome and please proceed. If you need to unmute yourself first, Ms. Hopley.
My apologies. Um, my name is Ramya Hopley. I am, um, thank you for, for the Planning and Development Committee for allowing me to testify. I, I'm an RTM District, uh, D-ten member, but I'm speaking for myself tonight. I've lived in Greenwich for about, uh, twenty-two years and I've, I'm here to testify against the HB, uh, fifty-four, twenty-nine. I believe this bill will completely remove local control of our planning and zoning, uh, board and, uh, give control over to Hartford. This bill is a one-size-fits-all central planning approach to zoning and does not work. I was born and raised in a very congested city of Madras, India and ended up, uh, growing, moving to another congested city of New York City. And I was quite smitten by Greenwich when I moved here and raised my three kids. It's the beautiful architecture and open space that Greenwich offers, uh, will be altered irrevocably because of this, uh, this bill. And it's such a historic town, I really don't want it to change. Uh, the bill would give developers such an incredible latitude to build high-density structures around, uh, train stations, making our quaint town into mini-cities, the ones I just left, uh, I left to come here. Um, and as of right, the bill really is in effect, it's means no public hearing, which is undemocratic. Um, this bill allows for applications and approvals of housing to be rendered within sixty-five days of receipt of application, which I find, uh, this, this very difficult, especially when you're building a multi-unit development, uh, which takes into much, must take into consideration, things like water, sewer, fire and safety codes. And the bill does not, uh, take into consideration local infrastructure capacities and historic areas of structure such as antiquated sewer systems and, uh, does not also consider the impact of forced density on environment, environment and traffic congestion on our neighbors, um, and impacts the small businesses the most, but particularly those living in small, around small, uh, train stations and, um, and because they'll be now confronted with high luxury, high-end luxury buildings and, uh, will be forced to, to pay high rents. Um, so I think this bill really only develops, uh, benefits developers and not, uh, individuals who live and work in towns. So I hope this, uh, I, I understand that this is a commendable, uh, approach to doing something that you want to, you know, to, uh, to raise, um, public housing, but I also think that it's important to keep in mind that democracy is an individual, uh, is about individual freedom and property rights. So I hope that you consider this, uh, and, and not, you know, take this bill um, as, as it is written. So thank you for allowing me to testify.
Thank you, Ms. Hopley, for your patience and persistence after a long day.
Thank you.
Representative Fiorello.
Thank you. I just also wanted to greet a constituent. Thank you so much, Ramya, for coming out and, um, presenting a very thoughtful testimony. And, um, I know you represent just a whole movement of regular citizens that are, who are getting really well-informed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Representative Fiorello. And now for our final speaker of the day, the afternoon, the night, the evening, and now the morning again, Nicholas Abbott.
Hi, thank you for being on so late. Uh, my name is Nick Abbott. I'm a twenty-six-year-old from Greenwich, Connecticut, in the one hundred forty-ninth district. And I'm the deputy director of the Segregate CT. I would like to live in the town that I grew up in, but I make too much to qualify for affordable housing and too little to afford any apartment in town. If Greenwich and Connecticut as a whole built more housing, rents for existing homes would modulate, making it easier for me to afford a, a home in my hometown. But that's not what's happening. You've heard today from countless young people in support of HB fifty-four, twenty-nine, not a single one in opposition. Our zoning rules are made and enforced by a generation that is older, more affluent, less diverse, and not res- not representative of the communities they come from. Some, though not all, from that generation want and can afford single-family homes. Good for them. That's not a problem. The problem is that this generation has enacted oppressive regulations that ban any other sort of housing. What we want is more affordable, multifamily housing near transit. We aren't stupid. We aren't misinformed. Our position is supported by every significant economist to study this issue, left, right and center. It's supported by the Planners Association, environmental groups, the Connecticut Conference on Municipalities, home builders, labor unions and several other well-informed stakeholders. The young people in this college studied this issue in depth. They know that building more housing lowers the cost of existing homes based on an avalanche of empirical academic work. They know that Connecticut bans multifamily housing on ninety-eight percent of its land, while extensive single-family homes are allowed by right on ninety-one percent of land. They know that building multifamily housing near dran- near transit drastically lowers per capita carbon emissions, addressing the most significant crisis of our time, climate change. Connecticut is our state and we are fighting for our place here. We aren't asking for much, just for local governments to get out of the way of a market that is willing to provide homes that satisfy our needs and our budgets. We've told you that the status quo isn't working. The young people leaving our state in droves are telling you the status quo isn't working and businesses struggling to recruit and retain workers are telling you the status quo isn't working. So you can choose unbounded local control, which has led us to our current housing crisis. You can keep shutting up young people like me who grew up here and who want to stay here. You can choose fear-mongering over a modest reform like this one. Or you can strike a reasonable balance that leaves local control intact, was adopted on a bipartisan basis and championed by a Republican governor in Massachusetts. And that opens up a tiny sliver, less than one percent of Connecticut's residential land for more affordable, walkable homes that are attractive and affordable to underserved populations, including young people, seniors, divorcees and low and moderate income families.
Mr. Abbott, that's three minutes.
Thank you. I urge you to support HB fifty-four, twenty-nine.
Patience and persistence, as I have said to many others today, and you have the the honor, I guess, of being our last speaker. Two hands, Representative Smith, to be followed by Rep Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief. I just wanted to say Nicholas, well done. For the final speaker of the day, it was as concise and to the point as anyone could ask for and right on time and well said. So thank you.
Thank you, Rep Smith. And I know that Colchester is one of the towns that's doing the right thing. So I appreciate your words.
It's an uphill battle, but we try. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Smith. I believe.
It was a mistake. I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Okay. Well, with that, it's 12:36 AM. I want to thank all of our speakers today, all who came and testified before us, who shared their perspectives, their input, their wisdom, their experience and their passion. And as is always the case, these are ongoing conversations with many different parties from throughout the state. And I look forward to continuing to learn more, to dialogue more. And all of us, as we say, to help make Connecticut the best state that it possibly can be. So with that, I wish you all a good sleep and a wonderful morning. And I will see you all, those, my colleagues, I will see you at the Capitol on Wednesday. Take care, everyone.
Good night.